Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 19th, 2016 School Committee Meeting. The time now is 6:30 PM. At this time, we'll be entering into Executive Session to continue discussion relative to personnel matters. The School Committee will reconvene in open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Sir.
I have a motion and I have a second. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Chair of the Board as well. At this time, we'll be entering into Executive Session and we'll be back up for our regularly scheduled School Committee Meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening. I would like to call to order the October 19th, 2016 School Committee Meeting. The time now is 7:03. The October 19th, 2016 School Committee Meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the Open Meeting Law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself.
Krista Brezner, Town Clerk.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight.
Mark Walden, Town Clerk.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation, united body, indivisible, omnipotient, infinite and eternal.
There'll be no recognition this evening, but rest assured, we have fun with it coming in the month of November. And then I'm going to actually hand it over to our Superintendent, Mr. Malone, to introduce our student representative this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kelsey Dunn, our student representative, is actually attending the State Executive Board meeting for Student Council in Franklin. So we're privileged to have the Student Council Secretary, Susanna Aguilar, here this evening to help us out. So thank you very much for being here.
Good evening. My name's Susanna. And Kelsey is obviously one of my friends. She did the evening work too. So, one of that is the Side Club. Since that we had an awesome, had an awesome turnout for Districtology this past week. Kevin Brooks came and spoke to TMHS because of Drug Awareness Week. So in addition, within the next week, we'll be doing a campaign to help stores to raise awareness and to remind adults how harmful it is to buy alcohol at night. NHS is gearing up for the Walk for Autism and starting up a tutoring program this year. And we are carrying out tutoring not only at TMHS, but throughout the other Texas Free Schools and by outside requests. They will be present at Apple Fest, have hosted a bake sale at this year's Open House and helped direct parents to the correct classrooms. All members continue to work on their individual service projects. The Anime Club will be hosting their Halloween Party on this Friday. They are excited to see new and returning members participate in their biggest event of the year. For DECA, they are working on preparing for the annual fashion show in honor of the late Megan McCarthy and have been raising funds from a research fund throughout Dana Harbor. Best Buddies, the Best Buddies group have been registered to be paired up all this week. They have held an information night at TMHS Library and are excited to see their new returning members as well as new faces. They will be present at Apple Fest and cannot wait for the annual Halloween Party hosted next Thursday. Student Council, Student Council is currently in the middle of hosting Homecoming Week. We will be attending the annual MSC Officer Shop at the College of Holy Cross this Thursday and can't wait to better ourselves and see our president, Kelsey Dunn, and present her workshop for more than 100 student leaders. We have also been planning the New Teacher Breakfast in our annual future.
Okay, thank you so much and thank you for joining us tonight. I really appreciate it. Okay, there are no presentations this evening. And at this time, I'd like to ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to turn to our Clerk, Mrs. Bennett, to present our payroll.
I'd like to move the approval of our October 5th, 2016 regular meeting.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the meeting minutes of October 5th, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair of the Board as well. Our Clerk, Mrs. Bennett, will now present our payroll.
I leave the School Department's payroll for the period ending October 6th, 2016 to be included and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,233,456.25.
Second.
So I have a motion and I have a second on the floor to approve the payroll period ending October 6th, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair of the Board as well. Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Does anyone wish to take anything off the Consent Agenda this evening? If not, could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and I have a second on the floor to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair of the Board as well. Mr. Malone, the floor is yours for the Superintendent and Staff Reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick request through the chair. Is it possible to move the TMHS International Science Trip to Iceland up in the agenda? Our staff member here this evening lives in Maine, so hopefully maybe we can...
I'm sure one of my colleagues would love to make a motion.
I might have a motion.
Announce that, Miss.
Okay, so I have a motion and I have a second on the floor to move up the, under New Business, item number two, TMHS International Science Trip to Iceland. So come on up.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Got to get home to the exciting debate tonight. So again, thank you for having me this evening. Thanks to Kristen instituting a new policy at the high school. It used to be that the Foreign Language Department every year ran an international trip. But she's assigned different departments, different years. So this would be our first time as a science department hosting an international trip. And we were thinking, oh, Galapagos Islands, that would be a great trip. But then we thought for our first trip, we should stay a little bit closer to home and came up with Iceland. Iceland is a unique destination. It's unique geologically speaking because it's the only place where the mid-ocean ridge comes onto the land surface. It's got tremendous tectonic activity there, volcanoes, geysers, mineral springs. Also astronomically speaking, in the springtime's a good time to see the northern lights if there's solar activity. So we think there are a lot of unique experiences associated with Iceland. And we've had a lot of students express interest and we think it would be a good plan.
Okay, thank you very much. So everyone has a proposal in their packet. So I guess at this time, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues to see if there are any questions for Ms. Bennett this evening. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. I think it looks like a great trip. Nothing about great things about anybody who's ever been Iceland. Mostly the science, like you mentioned. My only concern I have is, and I've mentioned it before for other trips, it seems as like a lot of our trips now, they went higher and higher in price. And that's my concern. So could you just go over a little bit? I know it's in the package for people on how, what the plan is going to be for the kids to pay for this and how it's going to be worked out.
Well, I've gone through EF Tours, the same company that's done the trips for Cross at Dudley in the past. And you're right, it is expensive. It's, to find ways to get everybody who might be interested in it, will be a challenge for sure. We're definitely open to fundraisers. We've thought about different things. They have the Monday morning breakfast, selling things like pizza dough or cookie dough, things like that. And I would definitely speak with Ms. Dudley more if she had any ideas on fundraisers. That's definitely a concern. Definitely not every student would be able to attend that might want to. Right now, we don't have any slush fund or any benefactors willing to pay for students, but if you have any ideas, we are open to suggestions.
Again, I think it's a great trip and I think it's a great idea. I was just a little bit concerned I have the trip itself and what the kids are going to do and everything. I think it's a tremendous opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Dick?
So if you book early, there's a discount?
Yes.
So that's a couple hundred bucks off for each?
Yes.
And how many students can go? Is it many? Can you see a number?
Well, as many pretty much as interested. I know in the past, some of the foreign language trips have had 50, 60 students and that wouldn't be a problem. So with EF Tours, they will take as many students as we can offer. And chaperones.
And the timing is, April Vacation?
Yeah, we thought that would be better than February.
Yeah. What's the weather at that time?
Well, because it is an island country, it does tend to be a little bit more moderate. But it's still cold. The average is around 40 degrees.
That sounds great. So would you leave before April Vacation? I think April Vacation is Friday is most cool. Is it coordinated that way?
Well, it's a six-day trip, so we haven't pinned down what day we might leave yet. So we could leave like the Saturday after school and come back Sunday or the Friday and come back Saturday.
Well, it sounds good. And I like the discount. When does that have to begin? Or when is that? How does that work, that discount? Is it a cutoff?
Well, we're having, provided you approved the trip, we're having an informational meeting next Tuesday for any interested students and parents. And the EF Tours people, they've put together a PowerPoint presentation. And as long as we can get interested people to sign up before January, they should be able to receive the discount.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Mrs. Bennett, I have a question for you. I know this is supposed to be a course as well as study abroad.
Experiential learning. There's one credit available through the high school, yes.
Okay, so it's just a credit that you get. You still have your seven classes.
Yes. Yeah, this is just one additional elective credit, yes.
Thank you. And I do love the idea that it's a science field for these students. Thank you.
We're really excited about it.
So yes, at this point, I know there's not details as far as, I know you're going to have information now and we're going to go through that and see if you get interest. And then I would hope that if that was the case, that we would see details in the future, even if it's in the Consent Agenda, we would see details for the actual, when they're leaving, when they're coming home, the actual costs and things like that. But I think, we're here for my colleagues, everyone feels comfortable enough of letting you move forward. But I believe we should make a motion and have a roll call on this one to support the Iceland trip. So if someone would like to do that.
I'll make a motion to support the educational tour trip to Iceland.
Second.
So I have a motion and I have a second on the floor to approve the International Science Trip to Iceland scheduled for 2018, April Vacation. This does require a roll call vote. Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
And the Chair of the Board as well. We think these are wonderful opportunities for students that they may not ever have that chance. So we really appreciate your efforts and all your extra work because we do realize that these trips, as everyone knows, do require a lot of detail, a lot of extra attention. So we appreciate people like yourself and others to step up to make this happen. I guess once we have more details, you know, it's moving forward, we might have some additional questions. But thank you so much for coming this evening and providing these opportunities to our students.
Well, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, we're going to go back over to Mr. Malone for the Superintendent and Staff Report this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to report out that townwide PAC met on Monday night. Had a great opportunity to meet with all the PAC representatives and building principals. Absolutely fascinated by the amount of fundraising and activity and interest of parents in the district to work with the schools and support the schools. It's just a clear message about the community and the importance of education in town. So that was great. There was a lot of coordination of fundraising events and the PACs hearing various of what the other PACs are doing and looking at that and certainly a lot of discussion about how to support the Texas Free Education Foundation upcoming auction and how to coordinate all those efforts. But just a great opportunity and a great opportunity for me, being new, to work with that group. One of the topics we'll be working with the PACs on is looking at some of the information we have going out to parents and how we're doing that. I'd like to try to move as much as possible to a paperless communication method, but we also want to keep parents highly informed of activities going on in the schools. There's also a great deal of events and activities going on in the town that are fantastic. We're just trying to figure out the best way to manage that information-wise as we look at revamping our website and we look at our email practices about what types of information we're sending out, we'll look at that. So this is all good information. We're a little bit conscious of information overload and we want to make sure if something is pertinent to school events and the children, they're to getting that and being conscious that overload could be an issue. Just wanted to update the committee on our recent submission to DESD. We were required by Friday of last week to submit which grade levels we would be testing in a technology-based test for the state assessment and which ones would be doing it on paper. So we met with our principals, we looked at our current technology capability, we looked at what our projected technology capability will be. And we feel like we've made some good sound decisions on putting our students in the best situation possible to be prepared for future ready testing. We are required to test with grade levels four and eight. We had tested online at the Murray School last year. We certainly want to continue with those students who experienced that last year to continue with them and also continue at the running currently. So we will be, in addition to grades four and eight, be testing technology-based in grades five, six, and seven. This is a big task, a big task for our students, it's a big task for our teachers, it's a big task for our technology department, and it's certainly unfamiliar territory for many of our parents. So we certainly want to work together. We do think in this health harmless venue and the ability to utilize the existing technology we have and through the budget process significantly upgrade our technology capability, we think this is the right time. We think this is putting our students in the best situation they could possibly be. And we might be a little bit uncomfortable going into the shared, it'll be a learning environment, but we do think it puts us in the best position for our students to be successful. So we'll be working towards that. In conjunction with that, we are looking at a larger device purchase. That was some of the money voted in at the town meeting a few weeks back. And we vetted several devices and samples throughout each of the schools, allowed teachers and administrators to look at these devices and examine them and work with them and get some feedback from the staff on the ground about what devices would make the most sense for us to purchase. So we're just about finished up with that process. We would like to get the purchase process in a way as soon as possible so we can get those devices in the hands of our kids for instruction, which is really what this is all about, not about testing. So we're moving quickly. We're encouraging our staff to certainly work with us and it's going to be a learning environment and our expectations are that we hope to certainly have an overview and exposure of this technology for all our students and a lot of our staff as soon as we can so we can have it prepared. Just a quick update on my entry plan. I finished up a visit at the Wynn School on Monday. Just terrific opportunities to attract the students and staff in that building. Great visit. Terrific people, met with parents, met with teachers, met with custodians, calf workers, aides, and got an opportunity to go to each of the classrooms and meet with groups of kids. Great opportunity. I have one school visit left. I had to postpone with a hand, visit due to injury, but I have that scheduled for next week. And that will finalize my formal school visit portion of my entry plan. And I would hope to be reporting back to you within the next month or so on some data that I've learned in that entry plan process and look for your feedback on that as well. Just a couple other quick notes. Veterans Day Celebration at Tuxbury Memorial High School will be Wednesday, November 9th at 9:30 AM. Great event, great community event, great event to certainly support our veterans and something we're looking forward to. And also what was mentioned around the Apple Fest, just a reminder that the Apple Fest will be October 29th here at Tuxbury Memorial High School, 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM. Great event and great effort to support Tuxbury. At this time, we'll pass it over to Mr. Reed.
Thank you. From the Consent Agenda, I'd like to elaborate on a couple of the documents. First, simple motion to get it on the air. The Tuxbury Memorial High School Guidance Department has scheduled their annual financial aid night for this, next Thursday, October 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, right here in Lodge Group Instruction 1 on the first floor. The presentation is open to everybody, but highly recommended for parents and seniors. We're asking that parents pre-register with Mrs. Whitehouse, our guidance secretary, and/or they may use the information and the link on the guidance tab of the Tuxbury Memorial High School webpage. If parents are unable to attend the presentation at TMHS, please visit the MEFA website to find a list of alternate dates, times, and sites, presentation, college financing seminars being held at numerous sites throughout the state. NPE, Northeast Professional Educators Network. I think you may remember, last year I was quite proud of this endeavor. Several Assistant Superintendents, including myself, planned and joined forces to provide a regional network of high-quality PD for those low-incidence roles, the types of teaching and educational roles that we seldom could plan dedicated mainly for. For example, last year, we planned PD for art, music, health, PE, technology, and library. We were so proud to have over 800 attendees from over 25 districts. This year, we've expanded the PD to those same teacher roles from last year, but also added other roles to the list. Guidance, school psychologists, adjustment counselors, social workers, BCBA's, rural language, English, second language, and free K teachers. The Collaboratives are also offering expanded PD session for aides to very prior training on November 8th. If you remember, we also approved changing the calendar in the last year to include Election Day as one of our full PD days so that we could do this regional endeavor with other districts. Due to the expansion of several districts wanting to jump on, we're right now looking at 35 districts as a member of NPE. And in four days of registration, an open Friday, we have over 1,200 attendees. So we're spread out over several sites now so that sites like Tuxbury Memorial High School can not only handle all PD, but this regional PD. It's very exciting. This year, we will once again host PE, Health, and Guidance on November 8th. So coupled with our already created PD from the district, we're just really proud of the offerings we can have for our teachers around professional development. And then finally, in my report last night, former Tuxbury Public School Principal Kevin Macardo facilitated the annual school improvement council training. Many of you have been through the training as you were volunteers to school councils for several years. Our principals attended with their own council members. Kevin walked them through the reform laws that pertains to the role and responsibility of a school council member. And then he led the group through some team activities so they could really get a sense of the mindset of the council members they would be working with this year. It's really a wonderful evening. We appreciate Kevin's years of experience and his help in leading quality and effective school council.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Okay, we're going to launch community reports. Do you have any updates about the School Committee?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Elementary School Building Committee?
Madam Chair, next Wednesday, I will be joined by the fellow members, Mr. Francis and James Cutlass and Assistant Superintendent Ben Regal. We'll be attending a meeting at MSBA in regards to our enrollment projections. And this is a design conversation for us to work with MSBA to look at the scope of the project that will help us, lead us into feasibility phase. So we're really looking forward to this opportunity and this should hopefully move us along and anticipate meeting with the Assembly Building Committee shortly after that and certainly with the town side as we hope this progresses in the manner which has progressed so far. So we're very happy.
Thank you for the update. The Texas Free Education Foundation, Mrs. Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two items. We are, the TDF is in partnership with the police department and offering prizes for drug awareness contests that are going on in the school. I believe the deadline is Friday, so hopefully the students will get up there and participate. Also, of course, you mentioned this earlier, the auction is coming up in November 18th. Please go out and get your tickets. We're in the process of packaging up all these lovely items, this is actually from last year's auction item. And as you can see, I've got pages and pages of items that will be offered up this year as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. Back to you for the Wellness Committee?
We have not met since our last School Committee meeting. The next meeting is November 20th here at the high school at 3:30.
Thank you. Okay, we have no policy changes this evening, so we're going to move right into old business and order. I'll send that right over to you, Mr. Malone.
Nothing, no big changes, Madam Chair, in regards to the enrollment. We're doing our October 1 submission, so we have an unofficial count. If we look back, it reflects of last year, approximately, something about four off. And approximately, again, about seven off from where we are on September 1st. So those adjustments come in as the year begins, as we find students and what students feel loved and what students have changed over the summer or so. That seems to be a stabilizing factor that is going to lead to the October 1 report.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think everyone can appreciate, we continue to maintain classrooms under 25. And that's just, that speaks volumes, I think, for our teachers and for our students. I think it's the best way to go. So we appreciate you being mindful of that and always making sure that we're putting students and teachers in the best possible position. But I think it's been great to notice even about the changes and additions, we're still maintaining that under 25, so I think that's wonderful. Okay, over to new business. We first want to approve for the 40s renewal for UPS postage meters for the Senate Committee.
Madam Chair, that is a lease agreement in regards to postal machines. Our business manager, Sharon Matthews, did a little research on it. Certainly, the standard is a three-year lease. We are able to have a cost-saving benefit if we move that to a four-year lease, which will require a vote. But the specifics of that, under a four-year lease, for 48 months, it'd be $132.75 a month, $1,593 per year, for a total of $3,186. Under the same context, same as you're saying, under 36 months, that would be $3,642 for three years. So by going to a four-year lease, we could have the same $456. Somewhat inexpensive items, but anywhere we can cost save possibly.
Please let Mrs. Matthews know we appreciate her looking into that because we always love to save money. And this, even though it's not a lot, I mean, 400 is still a good amount, but we could do more things for our community. So totally appreciate that and looking at that carefully. So at this time, does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding the proposal in front of us this evening? Pretty straightforward. If that be the case, could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the four-year lease renewal agreement. Second.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the proposal as put in front of us tonight to change from a three to a four-year meter lease renewal agreement. I'm going to take a roll call vote on this only because it does involve money, even though we're saving money for change, we're not spending money. I still like... I still like to make sure everyone in the community sees how everyone votes whenever it has to do with money. So I'm going to put that over to you first, Mrs. Bennett. Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Dick?
Aye.
And the Chair of the Side as well. Again, a special thank you, Mrs. Matthews, for that savings. Okay, we did the international trip, so next up is the program of studies.
Madam Chair, program of studies, students handle up these issues, run a little bit together and I'll add another layer onto that in that the athletic. In moving to the waterfall schedule for the block schedule at the high school, which has been a relatively smooth transition, requires a lot of work and a tremendous reorganization of classes, schedules, and tremendous amount of work. One of the pieces that became obvious as we looked at this work is sometimes things don't exactly match up well with things like the MIAA established eligibility protocol. Most, the MIAA protocol establishes eligibility through a number of core classes a student takes or passes. Most high school handbooks and eligibility requirements look at likely what students don't pass as the eligibility requirement. So we're trying to match that language up in general. Specifically, what the high school is taking on is looking at those, particularly elective courses that students may take, which in one sense may not appear to meet the standard of year-long core classes established by MIAA. And particularly as students get older and get into view seniors, they're more likely to have more elective classes than core year-long classes. The high school, through the high school principal, the disposal, and the guidance staff, and the administrators of the high school, looked at the array of electives that they have offered and made a decision to connect many of those electives so that they will meet the standard being the core year-long class. So they've put a lot of work into that. That would require looking at the program of studies and aligning such as art courses, phys ed courses, social studies courses, even sometimes core content of math and English electives, and aligning them together to make it easier for a student in a guidance counselor to sit down a year before to schedule out a student and make sure the meeting of the eligibility requirements where they need to be made. We don't want, we don't want to have the students taking a full load of classes, passing everything, and us wondering if they're eligible through the MIAA because it doesn't meet their standard. So it requires a lot of work. The high schools put a lot of work into that. They've realigned the program of studies. They've got some new language that will go into the student handbook, they will address that, and will connect that to the athletic handbook as well. So that should be a seamless process. This issue of aligning electives to benefit the student around eligibility is something we're going to have to really pay attention to over the years because electives of the courses tend to change. We want to meet students' interests. We want to enrich students where they need help. So there's pieces of that that we'll really have to keep an eye on. But this baseline work that the high school has taken on should clarify that issue for students, for parents. And really, this leads into a discussion of students who have the year prior when they're looking at programming and scheduling their classes to make sure they're conscious of that. And it should clarify any confusion, hopefully, with parents and students around eligibility pieces. It's a bit of a transition time for us. I think the high school is very much aware of that and aware that we certainly don't want students getting caught in that or getting disadvantaged by that. So we're aware of that in the transition. We'll work with students in that transition, but it'll be more clearly stated in the handbook and the program of studies and the athletic handbook as well as we inform.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding the proposal and our faculty's thing with eligibility? I mean, I guess at this time, I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Mr. Steven Johnson for bringing some of his questions and concerns back to the high school. I think that's always healthy dialogue to, well, we always go through the transition as you're saying. This is a new, wonderful schedule. There are things that we may need to realign and take a closer look at, or even in some degrees, spell things out. So I do just want to acknowledge him. He always works with all of us, including you, Mr. Malone, and Mrs. Vogel, and Mrs. Regan. So I want to thank him for that. I think this is a great exercise. I think I'm looking forward to next month, Mrs. Vogel's coming in with the program of studies and the changes. I know Mr. Drewin is also coming in with the new handbook that they worked over all summer and updated the handbook for us too. So we look forward to the healthy dialogue next time evening. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns? Okay. All right, we look forward to taking this up for our conversation next evening. Okay, so at this point, do you want to, because that really covers three and four.
Right.
So at this point, we're going to go right into school community matters of interest. I will start with, who this evening, Mrs. Bennett? Mr. Francis?
Good.
Are you speaking at the Veterans Day at the high school this year or?
I do not know.
Okay, so that, I know that Mr. Francis has always, being a veteran himself, it's really been wonderful to see him stand up in front of the students and they may or may not need you, but I would probably encourage you to reach out to Mrs. Vogel. We love that. You always do a great job. Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Dick?
Aye.
And the Chair has nothing as well this evening. Like to encourage everybody to tune in. We will be starting some great meetings where we're coming back with all the testing in our next meeting, and that's going to be November 16, 2016, where we will have different principals in, reviewing all the testing and seeing how we did and where we need to improve upon. We always love those meetings to see where the district falls. And other than that, were there any future agenda items that anyone has this evening? If not, you can always feel free to send those to myself, Mr. Malone, and Mrs. Johnson. So at this time, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You make the motion.
So I have a motion, I have adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair of the Side as well. We look forward to seeing everybody on November 16th. Thank you.